Good evening, this is the Board of Selectmen's meeting on September 28, 2020 at 6:30 PM. Is anybody else recording the meeting besides Lake Cam? First on the agenda, in accordance with the Governor's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, Chapter 30A, Section 20 relating to the 2020 COVID-19 outbreak emergency, the September 28th, 2020 public hearing, public meeting of the Board of Selectmen shall be physically closed to the public to avoid group congregation. However, to view this meeting in progress, please go to facebook.com backslash Lake Cam. You do not need a Facebook account to view this meeting. This meeting will be recorded and available to be viewed at a later date at www.lakecom.tv backslash. As a preliminary matter, my name is Rich LaCamera. I'm the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen. Let me confirm that all members of the staff and persons anticipating on the agenda our President can be here. Leah Fabian, member of the Board of Selectmen.
I am here.
Okay, Maureen Cadino, Town Administrator.
Here.
Tracy Gregg McGee, Executive Assistant.
Here.
And we'll have two other people that'll be attending shortly. Okay. Good evening, this is an open meeting of the Board of Selectmen and it's being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's order, Executive Order of March 12, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth spend public meetings as such. The Governor's order suspends requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in public accessible physical location. For either all members of the public parties are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order, which could be found and posted with the general materials for this meeting, allows public parties to meet entirely remotely as long as reasonable public access is affordable so the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Okay, second item on the agenda is Selectmen's announcements.
All right, I can take over there, Rich, if you want. The Fire Chief would like to remind residents that we are currently in an extreme drought. And even though we got a little bit of rain today, I would think that we're still in drought conditions. Outdoor burning continues to be very dangerous because of these conditions. Outdoor burning will continue to be banned until further notice. Grills and cooking equipment may be used if kept remote from combustibles and monitored at all times. And the way the Fire Chief explained this to me, it means not even burning in your fire pit. So just because it rained today, we should all wait for the the Fire Chief's advice on this, but right now, even as it stands, we're at extreme drought. We would also like to announce that I have a letter here that we received a grant, a $93,000 grant from the state to do some work around the Assawamse Pond complex. The letter says, congratulations, I'm pleased to notify you that the town of Lakeville has been awarded a municipal vulnerability preparedness program action grant in the amount of $93,236 to complete the project entitled Assawamse Pond's Complex Watershed Management and Climate Action Plan. So I do believe we have a link to the whole action plan on our website, but this money, there'll be a little bit more money that is a match from a couple of other organizations, so we'll be able to hopefully do a couple of the things on the list, get those accomplished, so we can try to alleviate some of the flooding issues that we had in 2010. But this letter we have is signed from Governor Charles D. Baker and Lieutenant Governor Karen E. Palito, and there's a lot of work, including Nancy Yates's work that's been going into this. So very nice that we have that $93,000 grant. We would like to thank the Lakeville Lions Club, including our own Rich LaCamera for being part of that, for all the work they did in the middle of the town intersection there. It always looks much better after the Lions get through with that, so we appreciate all your efforts. And the last thing I'm going to remind folks is that masks are required in all town buildings, including the transfer station. So please wear your masks. I don't know if the Chairman has anything else to add to that.
No, I think the only thing we should say about that, Leah, you know, is that the town has done very, very well. You know, having to do with the number of cases that we have, and it's extremely important, especially now with school open, that we continue to make sure that we follow those guidelines. So that's all I want to say about that.
Okay.
Okay, so I don't think Matt's here yet. So we'll move on a little bit. We'll go into item number five is discuss and vote to sign the extension amendment to the Loon Pond Lodge Management Agreement. So is that the final version that we have?
Yep, this is the final version. I went over it. It reflects all the conversation that Maureen and I had with the Parks Department and the Attorney for SEM. So this is to extend it from November 1st, 2020 until December 31st, 2020. So I-
I'll entertain a motion to approve the extension of this contract through December 31st, 2020.
So moved.
I'll step down and second that. Any discussion? Oops. And have the Town Administrator sign this amendment?
Yeah. Okay, so moved.
Second, all those in favor?
Fabian, I.
LaCamera, I. Actually, we skipped number three, the Town Administrator's report.
Okay, so that's done anyways. Hold on, let me get caught up here. All right, I'm good.
Good evening, everyone. Elections or what's going on right now in the Town Hall? Lillian Drain, our Town Clerk, and her poll workers are getting ready for the next round of elections, for presidential elections. Currently, they're working on all the mail-in ballots. There's been significant work in that area. And they will be working on early voting and then up into voting. As an aside, we're going to be overspent on elections this year already. We're predicting at least $5,000 overspend on all the additional processes, mail, and help that we've had to do. Town Clerk Drain is doing a fantastic job, as is Jessie Berry, and the volunteer poll workers and the paid poll workers are putting out a lot of product to get everything done and ready, and and I've watched their processes as they're double checking, triple checking, and matching it against the database to ensure that everything is safe and secure. The assessors is due to give me an update on the tax and local receipts. I talked to them on Friday. It wasn't ready yet, so I should be getting that any day now. We submitted our free cash for the state on Friday. This week, the MS4 stormwater report was filed with the EP two weeks ago. 40S reimbursements were submitted to the state. We're still waiting to find out if there is a budget for that this year. On Friday, Chief Perkins submitted grants for $40,000 for body cameras. And we're waiting to hear on that. It'll be a couple of months to hear about that. And that's what's going on in Town Hall this week.
Okay, thank you. Going to item number six. Talking about the fiscal '21 budget and capital plan. And the reason I put this on the agenda is because we got to decide, you know, whether we need to make any adjustments to the fiscal '21 budget and also decide whether we have to fund any of the capital items right now and maybe delay them until the spring. So with our additional information from the Board of Assessors for new growth and personal property taxes, we can't make that decision this evening, but we should also keep in mind if there's any budget items that we may have to address. To hold a special time meeting, we don't really want to do it unless we absolutely have to. So we'll make that determination probably next week. Anybody got any questions on that?
No, I'm all set.
Okay, so the next item on the agenda was to discuss a potential follow-up special time meeting and Casey gave us some dates and I would say that based upon the dates that, excuse me, that she provided us, the earliest it would be would be November 16th, because we do have to wait for free cash to be certified, you know, as well. The November 16th and November 30th, we certainly aren't going to do it Thanksgiving week, which is November 23rd, so once again, depending upon the scenario that we have, as far as budget is concerned, then we'll decide if and when we're going to have a special time meeting. Okay. All right, let's go on to number eight. Is to review and vote to approve a contract with the Department of Agriculture Resources contract for spray and neuter reimbursement program and authorize the Town Administrator to sign the contract. Does anybody, you want to explain this, Maureen or Tracy?
Tracy spearheaded this one herself.
Okay.
It's-
I can't even hear anything.
Okay.
Here you.
So basically what it is, it's a grant application to get some reimbursement for the spray and neuter for dogs. So I will entertain a motion to approve and have the Town Administrator sign this contract.
So moved. I think the original contract says it will expire in June of 2022 and has two years extensions going forward.
Okay. Did you make that motion, Leah, all set?
Yeah, I, yep, I said so moved.
I'll step down and second that motion. Any further discussion?
I just want to send my thanks and appreciation to Tracy for working on this. I think this is quite a nice compliment to all the work that Dave Freitz does at the animal shelter, so I think this is this is a really good thing for us.
All those in favor?
Fabian, I.
LaCamera, I. Going on to number nine is to vote and accept the the letter of resignation from Fred Korea for the Zoning Board of Appeals. He's resigning because he thought that it was a full-time position, so he doesn't want to serve as an associate member. And so that's why he's resigning, because we appointed him an associate member at the last meeting. So I'll entertain a motion to accept his resignation.
I'll make a motion that we accept the resignation of Mr. Korea as an associate member of the Zoning Board of Appeals.
I'll step down and second that motion. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Fabian, I.
LaCamera, I. Okay, next, number nine, number 10 on the agenda is to vote to appoint Greg Goodwin from Freetown Lakeville Regional School District to the Lakeville Emergency Planning Committee. In July, the Board reappointed the members of the Emergency Planning Committee. Bob Souza has left the district, so we need to appoint Greg Goodwin, who took his place, and his appointment will expire on July 31st, 2021.
I'll make a motion that we appoint Greg Goodwin to the Freetown Lakeville Regional School District Emergency Planning Committee. Term to expire July 31st, 2021.
I'll step down and second that motion. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
That, it's the Lakeville Emergency Planning Committee.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I make a motion that we appoint Greg Goodwin to the Lakeville Emergency Planning Committee, term to expire July 31st, 2021.
Step down, second that motion. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Fabian, I.
LaCamera, I. Okay, next on the agenda is to review and vote to schedule the Board of Selectmen's meetings for October and November. And Tracy has given us a couple of options as far as schedule is concerned. My recommendation would be because of Columbus Day that we meet next Monday, October 5th, then October 19th, November 2nd, November 16th, and November 20th. Are you okay with that, Leah?
Yeah, you said October 5th?
Yes.
I'm having a problem with bandwidth, so I'm gonna go back to no video, Rich. Hopefully that'll help. So we see October 5th, October 19th, November 2nd, November 16th, and November 30th, correct?
Yes, is that a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, I'll step down and second it. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Fabian, I.
LaCamera, I. Okay, where are we here? Is Matt on yet? Nope. Okay. Okay. Next on the agenda is new business. The Chairman of the Board of Appeals had called me over the weekend, and they are having a training session for all new Board of Appeals members and associates on next Thursday, and he would like us to consider, I know we can vote, to appoint the person, but he would like us to consider to decide which person we would like to put on it, so that person can attend the training session. So. Leah, Leah?
Yep, I'm here.
Okay. So entertain a motion to appoint?
Chris Campu. I'm sorry, I can't hear.
Okay, so the motion is, I'll make a motion that we appoint Chris Campu to the Zoning Board of Appeals.
As an associate member.
As an associate member. Term to expire. Okay, do we know the term?
I don't.
July 31st, 2021.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, I'll step.
Okay, go ahead, sorry.
Step down and second that motion?
Okay.
All those in favor?
Can I ask who it is because I didn't hear any of it?
Chris Campu, C-A-M-P-U.
Oh, cookie.
Okay, all those in favor?
Fabian, I.
LaCamera, I.
Okay, so then we need to ratify this, right, Rich, at a-
At the next meeting, yes. Okay, any other new business?
None for me.
Okay, well, I'll say. Going on to number 13, old business. Update of the former Lakeville Hospital property. We had our first meeting with the developer with the 43D Committee to review the overall project itself, and now it's up to them to come back and request a follow-up meeting to provide all the details about the project itself. So that's probably going to happen sometime in mid-October-ish. And then sometime in November would be the the site plane hearing with the planning board. So it's a few weeks out at this point. One more update on the Lakeville Country Club, and we had sent them a letter notifying them that the purchase and sale agreement that they provided us was invalid and that they needed to provide a new purchase and sale agreement, so we haven't heard back from them, so that's kind of where we are. So going forward, just take that off the agenda. Tracy, now if you can hear me, Tracy. Take that off the agenda, so we don't have to discuss it until we get additional information. Okay, who we got on here now? Is that Matt?
Yeah, and so is Franklin.
Can I just add something to old business, Rich?
Yeah.
So I think now that we have the little bit of an extension on the Loon Pond Lodge contract there, I think I'm going to try to meet again with the Parks, because I've done a lot of talking to a lot of people and, you know, just try to get an overall direction on what the Parks think they'd like to see there, you know, if we want to keep things the way they are, if we want to change it, so that'll be on my on my back burner. And then the other, the only other thing is we have the codification program going on. I'm going to be meeting with the Town Clerk this week, which has to do with updating all of our zoning bylaws, so those two things are going on in the background as well.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, we now have joining us Matt Schute from the Beta Group, and he's going to give us an update on the Route 79 project and his contract proposal. And we also have Frank Renez. He is a DPW Director on this as well. Who's going to be responsible for this project, don't you Franklin? He's laughing, I can see him. Okay, Matt, it's your turn.
Sure, I don't know where you want me to start, but I'll just, just an overview where you know, last time we were in, we kind of gave an overview of the project where complete with the 25% design, we are still waiting for MAST DOT to schedule a design public hearing. That will be a virtual meeting, so it will be recorded ahead of time. I will reach out to the town to find out if there's any input the town wants to provide on that. It would be very similar to the meeting we did last year at the school, the public, actually it was this year, sorry, back in March. We snuck it in right before all the public meetings got shut down. Be very similar presentation. And Beta is still under contract to do that work. Coming out of the hearing, which will likely be, I would say, two months from now at this point, we'll move into the final design process. That will start you know, November, December timeframe. And will take us through 75, 100%, and final PSNE design submissions. Right now, looking at the last schedule we sent to MAST DOT puts the start of construction you know, near the end of 2022 calendar year. Currently, the project is actually not on the tip. It's going to be discussed in the February, March timeframe of 2021. So the timing is good. If we can get started on the final design as scheduled, we'll be able to show some progress to MASTDOT when they meet and are planning projects. We've been told, you know, the project's a good candidate to insert into that that next tip round, which takes it out to 2025, I think. But it did get pushed out of the 2022 or 2021 tip because of the, you know, the right-of-way issues and the approval that was needed from the town to acquire the land needed and so forth. So that's really where we're at. We submitted a draft contract for that final design work to the town several weeks ago. So really, once the public hearing is held, we need to be authorized to go to keep this moving.
Now, just a clarification. You said November, December for the 100%. Is that this?
That would be the start of 75%, Rich. We'd be, if the hearing is held by the end of November, we would be able to start, you know, early December on the 75% design.
Okay, I was a little confused. I want to make sure we got your dates right.
No, there was a lot of dates there, sorry.
That's okay. So basically, right now, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, that the engineering services that we've already paid for conclude through that hearing with MAST DOT, right?
That's correct.
Okay. So the next part would be, just once that gets all done, would be to start the 75% design.
Correct.
Okay, so based on that, just so everybody knows that the cost for the engineering services, and correct anything I say, Matt, that the engineering services that are going to be provided by Beta are through the the end of the project, including construction engineering, are $326,000.
What was that figure again, Rich? Sorry.
That's all right, $326,563.
That, no, that's the amount that the town has already paid Beta.
Okay, and I'm a little confused here. So what's the extension? What do we sign?
The figure to take us through final design and construction services is, what we had included on that draft amendment, was $623,400.
No, I knew that, but I mean, it had all the other. So we've already paid $325,000.
Correct.
Okay. You're saying we got to pay another $296,000?
No, the, in addition to the $325,000, there's a $623,400.
And that includes the assessing also?
That's right. It includes expenses for the appraisals, not the land taking.
Yep.
The appraiser fee. There's also expenses in there for a geotechnical subconsultant and survey that we need, all part of the final design.
Okay, so the total of this amendment for this contract, for the amendment to the contract is $623,400.
That's correct.
Okay, I just want to make sure we got it right, that's all. Okay, so.
And just so folks know, you know, so that would bring the total value of this contract up to $942,000, and you know, it sounds like a huge number, and the figure that, you know, the industry likes to use is generally design permitting 10% of the construction value of a project, which is, you know, sometimes true, sometimes not. It typically actually is more than that. When you look at what the construction value of this project has grown to, it's up getting close to 10 million now, so you know, this, the total design permitting fee here is kind of in line with that benchmark that the industry typically sees.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to sign the amendment. Amendment number three to the Beta Group agreement dated April 27th. Amendment number three to the Beta Group Agreement dated April 27th, 2015.
So moved.
Uh, I'll step down and second. Any further discussion?
None for me.
I just, one thing, Matt, at some point, we got to put a cash flow together to decide how much money we need to borrow initially to do your, to do your piece. So I don't, I don't think, but I could be wrong, but I don't think it's going to be a lot of money, but we have to have an idea. So if you could do that between now and, you know, right after the, the Mass, Mass DOT hearing, that'd be great.
Yep, um, I, I, I know I've, I provide, did put together one before, and I'll just update that and send it over, because we are out a few months now. So the one I provided previously is probably out of date.
Okay.
Yep.
That's good, thank you.
Great.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? I'll, and ask the town administrator to sign the copy, please.
Fabian, I.
Uh, LaCamera, I. Okay, Matt, well, thank you. We appreciate your time, and I'm sure we'll be talking over the next few months.
All right, folks, thank you very much.
Okay. Thanks, Franklin.
Have a good night.
That was an easy night.
It was an easy night for you.
Good job, Frank, good job.
Thank you, Frank.
Um, just one thing I'd like to mention, we got a letter from the, the Meadowboro Lakeville Haring Commission, and they provide this annual report of how much herring they counted. And the good news is that it's, the numbers are back to basically, I don't want to say exactly where it is, but at least it's a lot higher than the previous few years. So that, that's good news. So anyways, good job for the Meadowboro Lakeville Haring Committee. Okay, is there any other business to come before the board?
I don't have anything.
Nothing for me, thank you.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I'll step down and second that motion. All those in favor?
Fabian, I.
LaCamera, I. Okay, thank you, everybody.
Our shortest meeting. Thank you, everyone.
Talking.